Everybody, this, we've got a long agenda today. The bio-sollication will be put to the end so we'll get everything through and give y'all, everybody time to talk. We have already made it, and before we start, I'd like to ask the county executive to say prayer.
Most kind, gracious, heavenly Father, I come to you once again. God, I just pray that you'll be with this body of commissioners as they meet and preach in everyone that's here, Lord. God, I pray that you'll be with two that are very special to me, Lord. I pray you'll be with five-year-old Landon as he battles cancer. God, I pray that you'll be with Kara. Lord, what I'd give to see her on the softball field one more time. And God, it breaks my heart to get the news that I got on the way up. Lord, I pray you'll be with her and touch her body with your will. God, I pray that you'll be with our county and our nation, Lord. And I pray that you'll give oversight to each and every one in leadership. In the name of your son, Jesus Christ's name, that I pray. Amen.
Praise the leaders of the United States of America and to the republic for which we stand, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Please make sure your phone is on silent. We do have to go through our regular commission meeting.
Roll call, please.
Pete Parker.
Here.
Shane Bowman.
Here.
Greg Brooks.
Here.
Danny Carver.
Here.
Debbie Davis.
Here.
Much Davis.
Here.
Christie Martin.
Here.
Kelly Morgan.
Here.
John Fittinger.
Here.
Samantha Trent.
Here.
We have a form we are in session, and this is irregular meeting, June twenty-seventh, uh, twenty twenty-three. First is approval of minutes of previous meetings. Have a motion.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion. Roll call.
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Much Davis.
Yes.
Christie Martin.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Fittinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Motion approved. Next is approval of reports of offices.
Motion to approve.
Have a motion, have a second, any discussion. Roll call.
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Much Davis.
Yes.
Christie Martin.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Fittinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Next, we have no words. I believe we had just one.
Mm-hmm.
Is that great?
Yes.
Carry on, notes. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion. Roll call.
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Much Davis.
Yes.
Christie Martin.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Fittinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Motion's approved. Budget amendments we are on the move until the end after we have the, uh, be, uh, the minutes to allow to the SUV. One of the budget amendments we're considering following this. So next is roll call, surplus, roll superintendents. Roll Jean.
It's from last month. It was approved last month, uh, so we clean that up for this year and have a resolution to surplus property. There should be a copy with budget amendments that I passed out of.
Who wants to read this? Hey, Roll Jean, you want to read it? You're all over it.
Whereas the Polk County Road Department has equipment deemed unusable and repair parts have become obsolete, whereas the status of this equipment deems the department to declare itself plus before the county legislative body, whereas the road department submits the following list of items to be deemed a surplus by the county legislative body meeting in regular session on June twenty-seventh, twenty twenty-three with the intent to be sold at an auction held at a later date. Whereas Tennessee Code Annotated reads the county purchasing law of nineteen fifty-seven, property that is declared surplus, obsolete, or unusable must be disposed of by the purchasing agent either by sale, an auction, or by competitive bid. Now therefore be it resolved by the Polk County Commission meeting in regular session the twenty-seventh day of June twenty twenty-three at the Ducktown Community Center in Ducktown, Tennessee, authorizing Polk County Road Superintendent Roy Thomas Jr. to sign any and all documents necessary in his capacity as chief administrative officer of highways along with a designated agent to faithfully execute documents accordingly to transfer ownership of the following equipment for sale.
If we can just, uh, uh, agree that it's the twelve items listed on the document that will be in the file in county clerk's office, S.R.I.P. all of them. There's a lot of serial numbers and a lot of items that are actually, is that okay with everybody in the convention?
Does everyone have a copy? I have two more copies left, so make sure everybody's got a copy.
I have the original reading out, so if I could have a motion on this. Do we have a motion on the surplus property?
I make a motion to approve.
Second. It'd be, uh, six, one, uh, twenty-three. Yeah, six, one, twenty-three. Second, discussion. Roll call.
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Much Davis.
Yes.
Christie Martin.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Fittinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Motion passes. Okay, the tax rate resolution, the appropriation resolution and adoption of twenty-three, twenty-four budget will not be done tonight. We must have the budget finalized and need it finalized before it's due to tax rate. And next is private act Ducktown courthouse. And you are still waiting on that?
Uh, he's been working on it. He did run into some things and needs to make the bill committee again, so we'll try to meet next week with attorney, but it is in progress.
Uh, next is the lease agreement. We'll put that on next month's agenda before it passes. Next, do you please bring up building eight as the, on unit eight, Greg?
We met, uh, with a young mate that's interested in building A where Jackie's office is. Did anybody ever hear about her? We had a bill committee meeting with her and she was interested.
If you have a, if you have a solution.
County attorney sent the lease agreement that was passed out, yes. Did you get it, so?
It was on the twenty-first, twenty-first, it's, you know, that was how committed it was to begin the package.
Did anybody have any issues with?
The lease agreement's got to be read.
All we got to do is anybody here with a newspaper, like a copy of it, public records, it's been reading, boring out. Anybody want a copy of it, I don't want you to outcop.
Wait a second, resolution, hold me back. If anybody does want, if anybody does want a copy, if you'll give me your email address, I'll be sure to give it to you. Resolution six, dash, dash, two, dash, twenty-three. A resolution approving the commercial lease agreement for the back corner office on the left side of unit eight at the medical park at the Copper Basin Medical Center between Polk County, Tennessee, and the city of Ducktown, Tennessee, with landlord and Blue Ridge Mountain Counseling, P.L.L.C., as the tenant. Number two, authorizing the county executive to execute the commercial lease agreement on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee. And number three, authorizing the county executive to execute and provide the above named tenant with written consent or approval on behalf of Polk County. On the matter set out in the commercial lease agreement that require written consent or approval from Polk County, Tennessee. Whereas Blue Ridge Mountain Counseling, P.L.L.C., desires to leave the back corner office on the left side of unit eight at the medical park at the Copper Basin Medical Center pursuant to the terms and conditions of the commercial lease agreement for one year at three hundred and fifty dollars per month. Now therefore be it resolved by this legislative body in session and assembled that one the commercial lease agreement with Blue Ridge Mountain Counseling, P.L.L.C., for back corner office on the left side of unit eight at the medical park at the Copper Basin Medical Center is approved. Number two, that the county executive is authorized to execute the commercial lease agreement on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee. And number three, that the county executive is authorized to execute provides the above named tenant with written consent or approval on behalf of Polk County, Tennessee on the matter set out on the commercial lease agreement that require written, written and for approval of Polk County, Tennessee. Be it further resolved, that this resolution take effect from this day of passage and public welfare requiring it on this the twenty-seventh day of June twenty twenty-three.
I have a, uh...
Motion to approve.
Fake. A motion on six-two, twenty, six-two, twenty-three, resolution and motion and second. Does that have any discussion?
And Ducktown has already printed the lease on their side. Mayor Collins told me that this morning.
How's the money split on this?
It would be a seventy-five, twenty-five split.
Or will it? Any other discussion? Roll call.
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Much Davis.
Yes.
Christie Martin.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Fittinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next, number eleven, surplus property, C.B.M.C., and this is Commissioner Clark.
Okay, in your package, you got a list of, a list here that moves Georgia family medicine that's interested in purchasing lab equipment, medical supplies, the Copper Basin Medical Center. They've been over there and looked at it, made a detailed list, the, the, what they're interested in and where it's at, where it's located, and, uh, made us an offer on the, on the medical supplies and lab equipment. And on the third page, if you'll notice, that, uh, Dr. Ross Gary, the local family medicine, based on the items, so, or as he is, considering all aspects of material research over the last six years, considering that they've been there for that period of time, and he's offering us five thousand dollars for the list that's attached here. And we also have a resolution on it.
Do you want to read a resolution, Jean?
I will. Can you give me the number on, uh...
It'd be six-three, twenty-three.
Okay, resolution number six-three, twenty-three. Resolution to discharge surplus property, whereas the following listed property has fulfilled its intended usage and longevity and service to the county of Polk and its continued usage has become suspect and has to be expected, to be expected outcome with such property being as follows. Property listed are exhibit A, that's the, uh, list that's in the packet, uh, attached from Copper Basin Community Hospital. Now therefore be resolved by Polk County Commission meeting in irregular session this twenty-seventh day of twenty twenty-three pursuant to TCA five fourteen oh eight and any other law of the state of Tennessee that the Polk County Executive's Office is hereby authorized to sell in part or in whole at salvage price or above the preceding properties which are hereby deemed to be unusable now that we're surplus by Polk County Commission with such being made at any legal sale qualified under chapter five of the Tennessee Code Annotated or any other applicable law or allowance of the state of Tennessee. Whereas this resolution shall become effective on passage of public welfare required.
Do I have a motion on, uh, six-three of twenty-three?
I'll make a motion. Second.
Have a motion and a second, any discussion. Roll call.
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Much Davis.
Yes.
Christie Martin.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Fittinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Motion passes.
One more thing on that. They are interested in one property there. They would like to come back and, uh, make another list and make another offer if that's a good idea.
If that's a specific item, it's not generalized. Wouldn't do it, it's going to be called, I know. You have your plate on that one?
No, I, I do not.
Oh, this is specific to that asset? It's not for anybody to use, go to that with? Tell them, tell them, I have a whole thing. Tell them, I have a whole thing. All right, motion did pass. Next is the number, number twelve, resolution I think born, and I believe, uh, Mr. Taffey is with to, uh, that's the next month.
Yeah.
Okay, so we will take last and head on next month's agenda. Number thirteen is surplus property parks and rec, Commissioner Ed Richard. That's me, and I'm so glad that Commissioner Davis was so good to offer to brief the owner, because she didn't get to him because Robbie got a hold of him, so I'll let you read this. Yes, this is resolution six-four, twenty-three.
Resolution six-four, twenty-three, to discharge of surplus property, whereas the following listed property has fulfilled its intended usage and longevity and service to the county of Polk and its continued uses have become suspect and is to expect an outcome with such property being as follows. Changeling fencing and metal tents posed from a high school. It's got fire in parentheses, battlefield area of Hammond's Park. Now therefore it be resolved, Polk County Commission meeting in irregular session on this twenty-seventh day of June twenty twenty-three to the code TCA five fourteen, dash, one oh eight and any other law of the state of Tennessee that the Polk County Executive's Office is hereby authorized to sell in part or whole at salvage price or above the preceding property which is hereby deemed to be unusable or surplus by Polk County County Commission with such being made at a legal sale qualified under chapter five of the Tennessee Code nominated by the applicable law or allowance of the state of Tennessee with it proceeds from the such sale being placed in Parks and Rec's fund due to the original grant expenditure.
Do I have a motion?
I have a motion.
Second. Have a motion and a second. Any discussion?
Do we have any more copies? There's not all of us following.
I passed about ten copies.
Me and Shane will get one. Thank you.
What this is, is a, is the fence around the battlefield and the fairgrounds, which was old high school field. The, uh, events committee had took a look at that area a while back and had asked Parks and Rec about doing away with the section of the field past the dugouts and the back stop would be, would still be there. But it is looking rather, it's been on pieces and, uh, there's sharp, uh, pieces on the wire, it's broken. Savage, but I can get it. There's that. I have a motion and a second, any other discussion? Roll call.
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Much Davis.
Yes.
Christie Martin.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yeah.
John Fittinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Motion passes. Next is number four, petition for business against Boll Solids and, uh, Commissioner Trenton, I think, we're going to move that to the end so that we get all the business done before we get started in the meeting.
The maintenance filling, but we're on number fifteen out of clinic, so we're moving that one.
And this would, this would make sure that's mine, and I apologize. Okay, the next one's number two, sanitation issues, and this is watering. Miss Fittinger. The deal on this, I have talked to Robbie, uh, we didn't see no watering signs around some of our sanitation sites. We had a couple of incidents where we have people who are bringing lawn chairs, this and that, and kind of camping out of the sites. Uh, I had some work with some of them the other day. Our supervisor had went out and told them they had a list, and they pretty well told her they didn't care who she was or what she said they were staying, and they did. Went out there and had another conversation, and I didn't know why would be their shortage. But they got your setup, and we didn't see no water signs out there, and we need to make sure that, uh, our sanitation workers know that we are back then, then, oh, it's because there was some question, or some of them felt like we weren't or would not back home because, uh, sort of reasons. So, uh, would I like to just have a vote to put watering signs out of the sites as needed and, uh, a vote to support our workers? Can I make that a motion? Any discussion? Roll call.
Pete Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carver.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
Much Davis.
Yes.
Christie Martin.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Fittinger.
Yes.
Samantha Trent.
Yes.
Let me, let me, uh, clarify, I know we're starting to scratch our head. Small rules for, usually going with Robert's rules allows the chair to vote the motion. Actually, some of the, when you were, kind of, went with it. Okay, so now, uh, that motion did pass. So, resolution subdivision regulations, sanitation, open top. I was going to suggest this for Robert, can you give us some more? I know they got the gage, I know.
Box is there.
The box is there. And it is, if it is operated.
It is operated. In place and operating.
What did I put it for?
Before I got the lady yesterday, it was a bump, she said it was a bump. I was quick.
I know we had some calls going on, too, but...
No, that was, yeah, everything as far as open top's good. I do apologize for those residents out corner, uh, last week. If you remember, there was a power outage, and it turned out that Tri-State hooked on three phase and had the motor running backwards. But we were lucky enough that we had a pre-crusher county bent, and so the company from North Carolina was already here, we got that straightened out. But I would like to also thank, uh, Scott Barker for his help in trying to get that running that day, but, um, do apologize for that, but it was totally out of our hands. It was something on the left that company's side.
Okay. Any other on the open top? Next is number seven, and that should be six-five, twenty-three, I'm saying. Subdivision regulations, county executive.
This comes from your, um... The guy that day, John, I'm sorry.
The political planning commission, thank you.
This is a, um, to define what a easement roadway and the requirements are. This comes through them, they've already signed off on it, but, um, this is a resolution from the county legislative body to accept this adoption that they are pushing from their recommendation towards the county legislative body.
It goes back to the road access and the numbers.
To actually define exactly what the road access is in their planning regulations.
No changes in what was in the package?
No. If you want me to read that, I will. If you want to.
Order it.
Order it.
Yeah.
So this will be resolution six-five, twenty-three. A resolution to amend the subdivision regulations of Polk County, Tennessee, whereas the authority granted for the Tennessee Code Annotated, section thirteen, three, four, oh, two, allows the platting of the territory within the county, and whereas TCA section thirteen, dash, three, dash, four, oh, three, authorized, authorizes amendments to subdivision, subdivision regulations, and whereas in accordance to the TCA section thirteen, dash, three, dash, four, oh, three, a public hearing was held prior to the adoption of the subdivision regulations amendment, and whereas the permanent easement standard chart in article six of the subdivision regulations requires clarification to differentiate between one lot and two lots to five lots. And whereas article six of the subdivision regulations defines access as including a lot abutting in easement, therefore unnecessary including lots with frontage on other roads and easements. Now therefore be it resolved by this, by the Polk County, let's see, put it in there, the Polk County Legislative Body meeting in irregular session, that the regulations and amendments are as follows. Number one, remove existing text from the article six, section six, one, oh, easement and replace with the following. Easement utilities, easement having a minimum width of ten feet shall be provided where deemed necessary along each side of the rear lot line for utility lines and underground mains and cables. Easement of the same or necessary greater width shall be required along the lines of or across lots where necessary for the extension of the existing or planned utilities. Whereas a subdivision is traversed by a waterlogged drainage way, channel, or stream, there shall be provided on both sides of the stormwater or drainage driveway with thirty feet of rested vegetation line. Parallel streets may be required by the planning commission in connection with the private road vehicles. Permanent easement may be permitted under certain conditions. These easements shall meet the following minimum requirements and any special conditions attached by the planning commission. The requirements of the specific conditions for the easement shall be placed on the final plaque for recording. A permanent easement private road serving one lot of or less than one acre shall have a required width of no less than twenty-five feet. However, the planning commission will require the easement to be increased to fifty feet if the case that property is further subdivided in the future. There will be no road base required, must be able to meet grade requirements in case road is developed in the future. A permanent easement serving an access to one lot of more than one acre shall be required a width of no less than fifty feet. However, the planning commission may require greater width if necessary to meet any special condition present on the plaque. There will be no road base required, must be able to meet grade requirements in case road is developed in the future. Permanent easement providing legal access to more than five lots shall meet the private road standards established in article seven, street design requirements, and thirteen, improvement standards of the Polk County subdivision regulations, permanent easement standard charts. The twenty-five or fifty-foot right-of-way requirement will still be part of the regulations, and when an easement exceeds the five lots required, six or more lots, it would have to be brought up to current road standards. One lot, twenty-five road easement only required, see above notes. Two to five lots, fifty only requirement, see above notes. Over five lots, fifty and must meet county road standards. Number of lots will be based on lots exclusively accessed by the easement. Access is for the purpose of the easement. Access will be defined as any property separate parcel that abuts on the easement and does not have frontage on another road. Note, as lots are added to existing easements, the entire easement must meet current road standards based on the new total number of property of individual lots, with exclusive use of the easement. At no time will an easement be approved without direct connection to a publicly maintained road. Now therefore be it resolved. On this day, Polk County Regional Planning Commission adopted this resolution and amended Polk County subdivision regulations and public welfare required. Amendment shall be effective upon the approval of the Polk County Regional Planning Commission. It was advertised in Polk County News on January fifth, twenty twenty-three, and dated February the seventh, twenty twenty-three.
I think there's some questions on this.
A lot of questions.
Yeah, questions too.
If we don't have a motion immediate, I'd like to sit us off in the next meeting. Are y'all all right with that?
Yeah, easily.
When they got made at the building grounds, or something, everybody can come to. They probably.
Did the development district do the?
Yes, yes, this came through from the development.
And what was, what was the reason for their change?
It was to amend, to make sure that the roadways were defined as proper. Is that right, Darren?
Yeah.
Your own make permission, planning commission. Or it was just to give a, a clear definition on both roads.
So okay with everybody, I'm going to just assign this over to the codes and grounds committee. Y'all have some meetings coming up, correct, Greg?
Mm-hmm.
And, uh, they can review them. Of course, any commissioners absolutely welcome to be there.
And it's nothing that's time sensitive, if I'm correct, Darren. It's just to give the planning commission a definite on the lot. So it's nothing that's, so that'd be perfect.
So this is moved to further notice.
If you don't care, would you just please be sure to get with the planning commission so they could make the preparations.
Okay, so that's moved, uh, this is subdivision. Next we have number eighteen. We'll get there, I promise. This is bids for two SUVs, sheriff, uh, county executive.
The RFP was ran again, and these two bids came back. Uh, two vehicles. Vehicle number one was a twenty twenty-three interceptor, three point three V six, all wheel drive. I'll not read the VIN number unless somebody really wants it. It came in at forty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. Vehicle number two came in as a twenty twenty-three interceptor with a three point three V six, all wheel drive. Came in at forty-four thousand, four hundred dollars. This bid does not include delivery out of state. Um, will, uh, will be off, will be issued, the agency will get its tax for a total of eighty-eight thousand and eight hundred dollars. Vehicles are equipped, they're gray in color with the driver's side unit LED spotlight. And once again, the price is forty-four thousand, four hundred dollars per unit.
And that'll be coming up budget amendment that is strictly for control cars and designated direct. Agreed.
I make a motion to approve the bids, two to you.
Thank you. Have motion second, any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
mush Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden. Yes. Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Kipinger.
Yes.
Smith and.
Motion passes. We're going to go ahead and take care of these a little bit and jump back and get the budget amendments. Put one of those through with number eight down. Okay, next is number nineteen, is three star program, county executive.
So this is for our three star program. And that is done every year in coordination with the Chamber of Commerce. I'm not sure. So, um, once again, here goes your little read. Financial strength and efficiency of government. Fiscal confirms letter, the twenty twenty-three, twenty twenty-four, three stars program requirement. The document confirms that Polk County has taken the following actions in accordance with the recommendations of the three star program. The county mayor has reviewed the county commission at the official meeting of the county's debt management policy to the current on file of the comptroller of the treasury's office. The purpose of this requirement is to ensure that local elected officials are aware and knowledgeable of the county's debt management policy. The county mayor and the county commission acknowledge an annual cash flow forecast must be prepared and submitted to the comptroller prior to the issuance of debt. This purpose is for the requirements of the county must go through the process of assessing the county's cash flow. It is done to evaluate the county's finances and confirm the sufficient revenues are available to cover additional debt services associated with the proposed insurance of debt. The county mayor and county commission acknowledge that all county offices are required to have this documentation system. Internal controls with TCA section nine eighteen, nine dash eighteen dash one oh two. The county has a functioning audit committee that meets, that meets Tennessee comptroller standards, and the minutes of the county meeting are attached along with a list of committee members that the meeting was held on June twenty-eighth of twenty twenty-two. This is to acknowledge that the audit committee meeting with comptroller standards met in June twenty-eight, twenty twenty-two, and the list of committee members of the meeting are also required, the minutes of the meeting or as a list of members included in the documentation, the debt management policy acknowledges policy that Polk County is on file. The office of the comptroller and the treasury was reviewed with its members, and the commission were present. So this is a confirmation of documentation of the internal controls requirement. This is an acknowledgement letter that Polk County commission understands that all county offices are required to develop this documentation system of internal controls for the office funds and departments under the authorization of administration of elected officials of Polk County income bonds with section nine dash eighteen dash one oh two of Tennessee Code Annate, acknowledged on this twenty-seventh day of June twenty twenty-three.
Do I have a motion to approve?
Let me come through.
Second.
Second.
I said, do I have a second? I've got a motion, do I have a second?
I have a second.
Who did it? Keith. Keith. I was like, did you?
All I need, that is it.
Somebody down there.
Somebody down there got it.
Is this a resolution?
Just a resolution or just an acknowledgement? Just acknowledgement.
No, okay.
That's, that's not all, just this acknowledgement. Got a little bit for three star program.
Uh, any discussion? Roll call. It's just an acknowledgement, we're voting to acknowledge that, uh, we're saying this.
Voting to acknowledge, we have acknowledged.
It's just a, it's a vote of acknowledgement.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Debbie Davis. mush Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden. Yes. Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Kipinger.
Yes. Motion passes. Next is number twenty, report on debt obligation. That's county executive. And you gave me the copy of everything in government, Robbie. Is there anything you need to add to it, or is it all right there in the house? All right. Do you want to do that something else?
No. Motion, come see me and give your email address. I'd rather appreciate it.
I have a motion. Motion to approve. I have a motion in a second. Any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Debbie Davis. Yes. mush Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden. Yes. Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Kipinger.
Yes.
Smith and.
Motion approved, we're going back to budget amendments. Okay. On budget amendments, we have under one oh one. We have number fifty-three, fifty-four, fifty-five, and fifty-six. Some were handed out tonight, some were in the package. That's one oh one budget. Sorry. I keep moving that way, huh? Do I have a motion to approve as read and, or as presented?
I make a motion to approve budget amendment as presented. Say. For one oh one.
Okay. I have a motion and a second. Any discussion? And there were two copies available to anyone that didn't see it. Along with plate. Okay, roll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny, uh, Danny Carter. Debbie Davis.
Yes.
mush Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden. Yes. Kelly Morgan. Yes. John Kipinger.
Yes.
Smith and.
Motion passes. We're going over, next is one sixteen on sanitation budget amendments, we have number two. We have a number three. Was that all we had, the three, some one sixteen, two of them?
Yes.
That's it on sixteen. Do I have a motion to accept as presented?
Motion to accept that.
I have a motion, do I have a second? I have a motion in second for one sixteen and two budget amendments. Any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
mush Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden. Yes. Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Kipinger.
Yes.
Smith and.
Motion passes. Next we have fund one twenty-two. And we have a number two. Is that all? The trace, you just have one on one twenty-two?
Yes, that's only one.
That's only one on one twenty-two. Do I have a motion to accept as presented?
Motion to accept that presented.
I have a motion in the second, any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
mush Davis.
Yes.
Chrissy Harden.
Yes.
Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Kipinger.
Yes. Motion passes. Next is one thirty-one. We have twenty-three dash four. Twenty-three dash five.
Mr. Chairman, there's only two, two amendments.
Okay, so you only have the two?
Yes, twenty-three dash four, twenty-three dash five, that's the only two.
Which is?
Omit twenty-three dash six, just omit that if you have.
Okay. I took it out soon.
Appreciate it, thank you.
Okay. Do I have a motion?
That's for year-end clearup.
On twenty-three four and twenty-three five.
My motion fix it.
Say.
I have a motion to accept twenty-three four, twenty-three five on the one thirty-one. Any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
mush Davis.
Yeah.
Chrissy Harden. Yes. Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Kipinger.
Yes.
Smith and.
Motion passes. One fifty-one debt service fund. We have number one. Just one on debt service, three.
Yeah, that's it.
Okay. Do I have a motion? Motion to approve.
Correct.
A motion in second, any discussion? Roll call.
Keith Parker.
Yes.
Shane Bowman.
Yes.
Greg Brooks.
Yes.
Danny Carter.
Yes.
Debbie Davis.
Yes.
mush Davis.
Yeah.
Chrissy Harden. Yes. Kelly Morgan.
Yes.
John Kipinger.
Yes.
Smith and.
Motion passes. Now the, uh, budget amendment, did y'all have in the package? Jackie, if you don't tell everybody to discard those from the package.
So you've got, uh, yeah.
We still got to do the sheriffs.
I thought that was on.
The orange.
Yeah, was that not the one point? How do you not have it?
It's on the back of that resolution, that bid. It's with the bid.